Good evening. The City Council Meeting of September tenth, two thousand and twenty-five is hereby called to order at six P M. The invocation will be led by the city clerk.
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we pray that you God is always and satisfy the needs that need to be met during this meeting. Please provide strength to the council as to make tough decisions. Help us work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask this in your loving name. Amen.
Is there anyone here who is a military veteran or currently serving in the military? Please stand or raise your hand so that we may recognize you. Seeing none. May I request everyone to please stand for the flag salute? Will the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Councilmember Farfan?
Here.
Councilmember Roa?
Here.
Councilmember Vargas?
Here.
Mayor Protem Del Rio?
Here.
Mayor DePaolo?
Here.
Mayor McCormick?
Will the city clerk please provide brief information relating to public comments?
A member of the public may submit a public comment via written correspondence or by submitting an e-comment through the city's website. Another another way to participate is through our Zoom option. The Zoom meeting ID and passcode are in the agenda packet. And lastly, a member of the public may participate in person at the city council chamber. Public comment is now open.
Good evening. My name is Heather Ortega and I live at two-two-three-one-three Norwalk Boulevard in Hawaiian Gardens. I'm here to talk about the firework ordinance. I own rental homes in the city. I was unaware of the ordinance that was, I guess, that they cite people for putting illegal fireworks. I went to collect rent on September third from one of my tenants. And she hands me a letter in my name that says I'm being cited for three thousand dollars for my tenants stopping illegal fireworks. I'm here because this is a nonsense. As a business owner and as a property owner, I do not have the legal authority to stop a tenant from doing anything. I cannot enter their property without a twenty-four hour written notice. I cannot seize their illegal fireworks. I could not jump in front of them from stopping things. This is a law enforcement issue. The people lighting those fireworks should have been cited since they were seen. They said the truck passed by them several times. The kids I asked in the street. I'm like totally pissed. I'm a licensed business. I received no notice to my business address. I was not informed of this before it happened. I was just like blown away that this could even be an issue. Imagine all the old people in the city that own homes that are rentals or have other people lighting fireworks and they cannot afford to pay this. I put this on a credit card. I'm told they don't know an appeal date, so I'm going to get a credit card charge of three thousand dollars plus interest? This is crazy. I don't know if you guys have thought about this, but like say if I borrow a car from you guys. I'm out cruising and I'm speeding along and run a red light, I get pulled over. Hey, it's not my car. Give it to the guy I borrowed it from. I mean, that's totally dumb. I should not be accountable for the actions of someone else. I don't know if you guys could put this on agenda or if somebody could revise this. If there was a law enforcement person going by, they should have stopped and actually cited the person lighting fireworks. I wasn't even in the city at the time. Like I even spoke to some of my friends that are police officers, like, no, you could have done nothing. You know, I could get charged for harassing my tenants if I tried to stop them from lighting fireworks or even from stop them from doing anything because once in my rental agreement, they are basically accountable for themselves. I cannot go on their property. I could not even do a repair. I can't even enter the home without a twenty-four hour notice. Sometimes it's forty-eight hours depending on the day I give it. You guys have any questions or comments for me? Basically, that's it.
Yeah, we would typically, this is public comment, so the council would not typically engage in back and forth.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
There are no members of the public on Zoom.
Good evening. Well, that's, I think, the third time I'm here and and nothing been taken care of. Especially the president should be comfortable area. He keep a spot for himself. And the first gentleman come here want him to move the gate and he get fired. Very sad. I think the city manager fired him because the president and the city manager was grown up, you know, playmate together and he allow him to keep that place. That's no, no. That's a Belshire Garden community property should be, everybody can use it. No, anybody live there can use their spot, but he put a gate on it. Please make sure that we move it because he doesn't own that piece property. Another thing too, he's, he doesn't do anything for me. I pay H O A every month. He don't take care of the plant, don't take care of nothing. Even the brick is broken, he didn't replace for me. I live in Las Vegas. I tried to come here for this meeting because I want the city look nicer, beautiful all the time. Everybody comfortable to come here. But now it's not the same. Thank you. I don't want to talk too much. I started crying. That's why my son doesn't want to come with me. He said, mother, you're not going to go anywhere. I said, yes. I'd like to have things done. I don't drive five hour from Las Vegas to here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kim.
And I get a letter from the congressman, write my name on it. He asked me the call addressed to me. My name's on it. So I don't go without here. Maybe I go further.
Thank you. Next item, proclamations and certificates. We have two for tonight. I'm going to read the first one. Proclamation recognizing September ninth as California's one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary of statehood. I would like to read the content of the proclamation. California's one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary of statehood. Whereas on September nine, eighteen fifty, California became the thirty-first state in the Union, also known as Admission Day. And whereas California will celebrate its one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary of statehood on Tuesday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, beginning a year-long celebration that continues through the summer of two thousand and twenty-six, ending in the national celebration of the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. And whereas California welcomes people from all walks of life as a state of dreamers and doers, our collective drive for a better world combined with our innovative and collaborative spirit has helped drive progress over the last hundred and seventy-five years from human rights and labor rights to science, technology, and entertainment. Whereas Californians have demonstrated their resiliency against adversity and tragedy, coming together to heal and rebuild and through that community, finding finding moments of peace and unity. And whereas California has a vibrant culture and majestic beauty, inspiring joy in residents and visitors alike. And whereas we celebrate all those who have chosen to pursue the California dream, all those who are driven by grit, determination, and relentless belief in what's possible. And whereas California's history started long ago, even before becoming a state. The land was cared for by Native American tribes, making California home to the largest Native American population and the second largest number of federally recognized tribes in the nation. And whereas California is now home to more than thirty-nine million people, is the fourth largest economy in the world and leads the nation in agriculture, manufacturing, and tourism with awe-inspiring landscapes from desert regions, mountain ranges, and iconic Pacific coastlines. And now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Hawaiian Gardens does hereby proclaim September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five as California's one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary of statehood. Well, happy birthday, California, and happy one hundred and seventy-five years. Next item, proclamation of proclamation recognizing September as attendance awareness month. Attendance Awareness Month. Whereas chronic absence may be the single biggest barrier to improving education in our country, making good attendance crucial to nurturing an educated and healthy next generation with the skills needed for a strong economy. And whereas students and families are more likely to show up and engage when there are positive conditions for learning at school, including physical and emotional health and safety, a sense of belonging, connection and support, academic challenges and engagement, and adults and peers with social, emotional competency. And whereas reducing chronic absence, missing ten percent or more of school for any reason, requires a comprehensive approach that starts with prevention and early intervention, including developing routines and trusting relationships that create a sense of belonging rather than responding with punitive action with research finds, which research finds is not effective. And whereas improving attendance and engagement takes schools, families, elected leaders, and other community partners working together to rebuild regular and trusting communications and to identify and address barriers to being in school. And whereas taking attendance daily in a caring, consistent manner is essential to identifying when students begin to miss too much school and for noticing as soon as possible when so when students are starting to miss too much school and engaging students and families with needed support and resources. And whereas supporting the health and well-being of the school community and sending the message that students should avoid missing school for minor symptoms of illness is essential to re-establishing daily attendance routines. And now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Hawaiian Gardens stands with the nation in recognizing September as Attendance Awareness Month. We hereby commit to focusing on reducing absenteeism and addressing the factors that cause students to miss school in order to ensure all children have an opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive academically, emotionally, and socially. We recognize that we must work together to build an engaging school environment that motivates attendance and sends the message that learning matters. Next item, we're moving on to the presentations. We have one presentation for tonight. Presentation by L.A. County Sanitations Sanitation District regarding sewer line improvements within the city, including project schedule, construction timeline, and parking impacts.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, and dear residents. If you remember, on April ninth, City Council Meeting, we have invited Mr. Andrew Negumba, L.A. County Public Works Director for the City Council Meeting to provide some updates regarding the rate increase and also future projects in our city. During that meeting, there were some questions from City Council regarding the infrastructure projects in Hawaiian Gardens. For that reason, we have invited L.A. County Sanitation District to this meeting to provide some updates regarding upcoming upcoming project in Hawaiian Gardens. Also, we are pleased to see this improvement in our city. Now we are building a strong relationship with other agencies that they are working with the city and they are serving Hawaiian Gardens residents. These lines are over sixty-year-old, these concrete sewer trunks. And the methodology that they are using for improving them, there, there's a cured-in-place or C I P P technology. There's a short video that I wanted to show you that technology and after that, I'll prepare. I will provide more details about this project. If Beshear can please show that video and then we'll continue with the rest of the presentation.
...without digging. Resin saturated coated felt tubing is inverted or pulled into the existing pipe. Hot water or steam is then circulated throughout the tubing, curing the resin and forming a tight-fitting, jointless, corrosion-resistant pipe within a pipe. Service laterals are then restored using a robotically controlled cutting device. Finally, the rehabilitated pipe is fully inspected by closed-circuit TV. In situ forms trench-
The video is started from maybe the middle part, but the method is just instead of trenching, this is a trench trenchless method. And instead of opening the trench, making, you know, mess on the street, we are basically using the existing manholes to, uh, to, uh, to chew the new plastic material over those manholes, which will cover the existing concrete pipes and will increase the lifetime lifespan for these lines. This project actually is starting from City of Lakewood and they already started the improvements over there. So they want to continue these improvements within Hawaiian Gardens. However, there are some concerns which we want councils, you know, attention and direction about the schedule and timeline and parking impacts for the Hawaiian Gardens residents. This project has two phases. The first phase will start in mid-October and continue through mid-December, impacting residents on two-fourteenth Street east of Elaine Avenue. The second phase is expected to begin in mid-November, continue throughout mid-January, which is holiday season, you're aware of that. This phase will affect residents on two-fourteenth Street between Elaine Avenue and Belshire Avenue, as well as on Belshire Avenue between two-fourteenth Street and two-fifteenth Street. To provide more details, I have invited Mr. Abbas Smile from Sanitation District and he will continue with the presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon, City Council. It's honored to be here. Really appreciate everybody's time allowing us to present for the project and give a quick overview on the schedule, the impacts, as Ms. Nima said, and and give an overview as well about the sanitation districts and what we do. So sanitation district, at a glance, we were formed in nineteen twenty-three. We treat five and a half million dol- Sorry. We treat wastewater for five and a half million residents in the county of Los Angeles and handle two million tons of waste. And we also treat diverted stormwater flow. And currently, we have seventeen hundred employees that are spread between the AK warrant facility as well as our joint our joint administration office in the City of Whittier. Our budget is one billion dollars annual annually and we, um, we provide also green energy and have a large food waste recycling operation at our AK warrant facilities in the City of Carson. Our mission is to protect the public health and the environment through innovative and cost-effective wastewater and solid waste management. And in doing so, convert waste into resource such as recycled water, energy, and recycled materials. At the warrant facility, you can see there's there's green energy where we're utilizing the steam from the the wastewater is treated and we we use the energy to power the plant. And at the Quinta Hills facilities, we're recycling food waste as well as wastes comes around from from the residents in the county of Los Angeles. Quick overview about our our service area in the great Los Angeles County, as well as on the next slide, you'll see where our water recommission plants are. And so our water recommission plants mainly treats water and then diverts the rest of the solids down to the warrant facility in the City of Carson. The nearest facility here is is the Los Coyotes Water Recommission Plant. Now, just a quick overview about the difference between the district sewers, which we are going to be referring referencing as a trunk sewer rather than a local sewer. The local sewer connections are, they service the residents with their local laterals from businesses and and homes. And those, um, local sewer lines connect to our trunk sewers through either manhole connection or through or through a lateral into the trunk sewer. And then that that flows diverted either to the AK warrant facility or to downstream down to Long Beach. And the larger regional sewer lines is what's maintained by the sanitation districts. And in this project, we're going to be rehabilitating the manhole structure itself as well as C I P P lining our trunk sewer lines. And just like in the videos, you you saw there's laterals. In some cases, so, um, some homes and businesses, they they get a permit to tie into our trunk sewer. And and then once the lining goes through, we'll go in and cut in that lateral to 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 continue service. Now, here's a quick overview of the project. It's in two phases, as Mr. Nima had stated. It's starting right now in the City of Lakewood, which Phase One is is will be completed at the end of this week. And Phase Two starts back starts up next September fifteenth and into the end of, uh, end of September. And but for the sake of simplicity, I'm referring to Phase Three for the project and Phase Four as Phase One and Phase Two. Just to just keep it clean for for this presentation. As you can see, it's the the border between Lakewood and Hawaiian Gardens, as you already know, is is Centrilia. So Phase Three or Phase One, in this presentation reference to adds, starts at Manhole Three, Seven, Six, which is in the corner of Elaine and two-hundred-and-fifth. And it continues down past Centrilia and will be rehabilitating the City of Hawaiian Gardens Manhole Number Three, Seven, Five, Three, Seven, Four, all the way to Three, Six, Eight. So that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight manhole structures will be rehabilitating. And so the, and for the the wastewater degrades the concrete, not the actual water, it's not the sewer itself, but it's the hydrogen disulfide, the H two S gases is what deteriorates the concrete. So allowing us to go in, once the C I P P liner goes in, we'll 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 drop back and spray either mortar or calcium cementous material to line the the concrete and extend the life of the manhole structure as well as the sewer lines. So the reaches are are broken up into two phases to allow for our bypass pumping to to be installed. And the first phase is from Three, Seven, Five to Three, Seven, One. And which which I'll be going to more detail in the following slides. So the project is referenced as Joint Outfall H C eight D Trunk Sewer Rehab. And as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, trunk sewer is referenced to our sewer lines, which which transport the the wastewater from all all the local sewer lines that comes in and via via lateral. This, the sewer lines were constructed in late nineteen fifties. It's over seventy years old. It's treated over time due to wear and age, as I mentioned, due to the H two S gases that deteriorates the reinforced concrete pipes and reinforced concrete manhole structures. And we're currently rehabbing eight thousand linear feet of of trunk sewers utilizing a C I P P or cured-in-place pipe liners. And as the video stated, once the C I P P liner goes in and it's cured, you could forget completely about the old concrete pipe. It's designed to carry the load of vehicles above the road, the the load from the streets. So it's it's intended to be its own pipe altogether and you and you could forget about the concrete pipe. That's it's just used as as a form, for lack of better words. It's pipe instead of a pipe. And extends its life cycle to fifty years. So I, one thing, I take personal pride in my projects. I talk to residents. I hand out the flyers. I tell them, I could assure you we will not be back for another fifty years. You know, you're going to be impacted with parking noise. But it's, we're just extending the life cycle of of your sewer lines. And I know it's something that's not really seen because it's underground, but it's it's something that's really important. Because if a sewer line does collapse, it does cause a sinkhole, and now you you have a larger safety concern on our hands. So Phase One starts on on October twenty-third. And I'll be emphasizing on the bypass because it's the largest of the scope of work on the project. Because in order to do, to install a liner in the trunk sewer, we have to divert the flow first. We need a dry pipe in order to install the C I P P liner. So it starts up in, again, the Sea of Lakewood is when it starts and across Centrilia. And it's going to, it's going to run down behind the apartment buildings and then up and around the the stormwater channel and then make a left turn onto two-hundred-and-fourteenth Street. So the duration is from October twenty-third to December third. We'll be installing two twelve-inch H T P E pipes. H T P is like really, really dense plastic. And and I'll be showing pictures of how it looks like once it's installed and how it looks like while it's being installed as well, just just to get a better idea of what of what we're talking about. But it is above ground, but this is very, very tough material. It's been ran over by box trucks. It's, you know, vehicles have hit it before in the past. And we, the reason why we have two, it's a primary and a secondary. So God forbid if a vehicle does strike the pipe, we have a secondary backup. And there's always redundancy. So in order to move the flow, we need pumps. Typically, the trunk sewer is flow through gravity. But in this case, we have to pump the water out using pumps. They have a primary and a secondary pump constantly having redundancy to ensure that that there 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 are no failures. But in the case of a failure, we we do have a inflatable stop log, which is blocking the flow from from moving. If anything does fail, we'll just pull the plug and allow the the sewer to 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 continue flowing. Now, when we do cross intersections, obviously, we don't want to impact traffic. So our pipes are above ground, they cross intersections, but we do trench across. So in this case, we'll be trenching across Centrilia. And then in the upcoming slides, I'll be illustrating the location of all the trenches as well. And above the trench, we'll be putting trench plates and those trench plates are welded together. For example, in the Sea of Lakewood, a- For example, in the city of Lakewood, a resident complaint regarding trench plates moving, creating noise. They called our office at eleven AM. I was out there with Jake at four thirty in the afternoon, same day, addressing their complaints. And I went and talked to the resident and said, hey, you know, do you guys fix houses? We need a contractor out here to take care of our new bathroom because of how quickly responded. So I take personal pride in all my projects I'm part of and I talk to residents one by one, explain the impacts, explain parking, what days you're going to, we're going to take away your parking, but I can assure you it's only, just bear with us, we're only for a month. We won't be back for another fifty years. So as I mentioned, it's two discharge pipes. We're starting on the corner in the city of Lakewood crossing Centralia and Nima, may I go up there and kind of point? There you go. Yeah, and I have a highlight of the next slide. So as you can see, we're trenching across Centralia and they replace trench plates. And so the first phase is very minimal impact on the residents. It's going to go in between the apartment buildings here. And then we've selected the route to go on top of the concrete channel and then go on to Two Hundred Fourteenth Street. But we're going to be installing the pipe on the side of the curb. And there's an apartment building here and the Charles King Company is going to be placing ramp to allow for the residents to be able to leave their driveway out of this apartment complex over here. So the bypass starts in the corner of Two Hundred Seventh and Elaine and it terminates on the corner of Two Hundred Fourteenth and Horace Street. So Phase Two starts on November twentieth and ends in January seventh. Now, we're giving ourselves a week on the front end to install the bypass and a week on the back end to remove the bypass. Because this is, it's really big, heavy pipe that we got to bring in trucks, phase one by one. It's pretty much melted together and then diffuses the pipe. That takes about a week for us to go out there, trench, put the pipe down on the floor, bring out the pumps. We first test the pumps with water to ensure that their function is no leaks. And then we'll go ahead and give them the green light to move forward with the bypass. I'm there twice, three times a week to check on the work and now we have a full-time inspector as well on on the job site, making, ensuring that we're following the special provisions, the Green Book and our amendments to ensure that everything is installed per the contract documents. So in regards to Phase Two, it's going to be a little bit more of an impact to the residents due to the fact that it's a longer reach. So we'll be installing our pumps in the cul-de-sac along Elaine Avenue, over in the cul-de-sac. And then it's going to run across Two Hundred Fourteenth Street and will terminate on the, will cross Norwalk Boulevard. And as you can see here, here's a more detailed image of the impacts for Phase Two. Again, this is from November twentieth to January seventh. Now, initially, I learned this from the city of Hermosy Beach. I actually implemented this this form of bypass where you shift the pipe over just a little bit enough to give room for parking on one side of the street and then take away parking on the other, but leave room for the drive aisles. So in this case, we're only taking away parking on the north side of Two Hundred Fourteenth Street and allowing for parking on the south side. And what we did was we looked at how many parking spots are in each street and counted it up and say, hey, there's there's more parking spots on the south side, therefore, let's shift the pipe up to the north and allow the residents to take advantage of the most parking along the street to minimize the impact. So we're going to be trenching across Norwalk Boulevard and then putting trench plates. And then the trench plates are going to recess to minimize noise impacts of vehicles as well. The bypass is going to go across Belshire Avenue and then terminates on the corner of Two Hundred Fourteenth and Clarita. Now, the bypass is going to terminate on the corner of Belshire and Two Hundred Fifteenth. So typically, what I do is, so contractually, the contractors are required to notify residents one week in advance, forty-eight hours and twenty-four hours. So I'm going to go in, I typically, what I always do is go in forty-eight hours, hand out the flyer, talk to the residents, especially the resident on Two Hundred Fifteenth and Belshire, give them a heads up. You know, this is going to be underground. You won't see it, but in regards to discharge, because the manhole is where we're going to be discharging the flow, but they'll never see it because it's going to be underground. And they'll be placing trench plates. So the only impact is going to be during the day when we're digging and then placing the pipe, but after that, they'll they'll never know it's there. But for me personally, I take, again, like I mentioned before, I take personal pride in my projects. I care about the communities I serve. And I want to make sure that everybody's aware of the impacts, everybody's aware of what's, how it's going to impact in regards to parking, noise, what time we're going to be there. And I actually, I always carry my work cellphone. I'm on call twenty-four, seven on the construction management side of the districts. My number is on every flyer that's handed out, so they can call any questions. I try to maintain any complaints on my level before it comes up to your level or, you know, up to our up to our heads on the districts as well. So here's a sample, a sample project illustrating what it means when we're trenching across the street. So we initially come in, we saw cut just enough width to fit the two twelve-inch pipes. And they have the trench plates ready to go. Once we we put the pipes back in, we'll put the trench plates on top and then the traffic is going to continue. So we typically do this either during the day or at night to minimize the impact of traffic. And then, but when it just crosses into communities to save costs, we do keep the pipe above ground if it's not a major intersection. Now, here's an example of, this is the city of Hermosy Beach, as I mentioned before. This is the kind of tactic that I use where we took the overall measurement of the street, verified it could fit one driving lane, two pipes, and then driving lane and then parking. So as I mentioned, like we implemented the same concept here in Hawaiian Gardens. I counted every parking spot on both sides and then took advantage of it. So that's the reason why we're taking parking only on one side of the street rather than both sides. And here's the expected construction impacts. So traffic is going to be, probably the biggest impact is on the Two Hundred Fourteenth and Belshire. Because that's where there's a major crossing there for our pipes, but it is going to be underground though. We're going to be trenching on the corner of Belshire and Two Hundred Fourteenth to make sure we allow for vehicles to make a right turn and left turn on the intersection. There are limited closures around the middle area. Now, that's in regards to when the CIPP does occur. So just like in the video, you have an insertion manhole and you're going to catch it on the next reach, the next manhole. So we're going to go from manhole to manhole. So you have a truck staged at the first manhole. You insert the liner and they have another truck staged at the second one to ensure that it's gone all the way through. And then this is a twenty-four hour operation. We have our, once you put the liner in, you have to cure it because it is a resin. So you have hot water and boilers. But they're not very, and I can attest to it, they're they're not very allowed. Once you have the boilers running, they run on diesel and it's very minimal impact on the residents. Same thing with the pumps as well. It's no more than twenty-four decibels because it is enclosed. The diesel pumps are enclosed and are mobile as well. So the contractor will provide traffic control plans with vehicles, pedestrians. There'll be signage out in the streets. Per our special provision, we require the contractor to go in when we can advance and post signs on the major streets to ensure the residents are aware of the upcoming project. And as I mentioned, the notifications go in one week in advance, forty-eight hours and twenty-five hours, just as a reminder to the residents. And then obviously, we go in seventy-two hours in advance to post no parking. So that's kind of a hint at the residents that, you know, hey, there's some work coming up right pretty soon. Flow bypass, the sewer is lined over segments of several weeks. Like I mentioned, we give ourselves a one week in the front end and about a month to do the CIPP lining and then a week in the back end to remove the bypass and move on to Phase Two. So each segment must be cleared of wastewater for lining. As I said, it needs to be a cleared pipe in order, it needs to be cleaned. So we first install our bypass. We dry it and then clean the pipe the day before and then move forward with the lining. The district inspector is on-site twenty-four, seven. So I'm available twenty-four, seven in case of emergencies and then we have a full-time inspector. If the work is going on twenty-four, seven, we'll have somebody out there managing the job, making sure that we're, everything is being completed per our contract documents. And in regards to laterals, as I mentioned before in the start of the presentation, some homes and businesses get a permit to tie into our sewer lines and then obviously, the city of Hawaiian Gardens has their laterals. So we do pre-CTV to capture every single lateral that's on that trunk sewer line. So once we line it, we go back in, we've documented what those laterals are, they get cut in, so there's no way of us missing a lateral. The last thing we want is for sewer to be backflowing. So we save the footage for the pre-CTV. That's all saved and then we go in and document every lateral. And after we line, we do post CCTV illustrating where each lateral was cut in, take a photo. And so this Q and C about the entire process. So the project was issued, the NTP was issued in November twenty twenty-four. We started construction and we're going to be starting construction in Hawaiian Gardens in October. And will be done in January twenty twenty-six. So what we're requesting is, while we do the CIPP lining, it's going to be from seven AM to eleven PM. In some cases, it might go on further into the night, into the morning after. So but we will notify Mr. Nima if, in case it does go over past eleven PM time. Now, this is strictly in regards to CIPP lining because you have to cure the liner. But in regards to trenching, installing pipe, that's, we're following the typical city hours of seven thirty AM to five PM. So any questions? I brought Mr. Merritt King and Jay King here from Charles King Company. They're the prime contractor. Mr. Vidal Cortez is my supervisor as well. He's here today to ask in case the city council have any questions regarding the upcoming project.
Will you ask the council if you have any question?
I just have one quick question. First of all, I want to thank you for this presentation. I know it's a lot of information. And also, I know that parking is something that we deal with a lot, just in our city, but everywhere. I know that you mentioned that you're going to do the trenching in the middle, so you don't impact the parking spaces. Have we thought of maybe, I know because you said that the greatest impact is going to be between Two Hundred Fourteen and Bell because that crosses Norwalk Carson Street, correct? Is that?
Yes.
Going to cross the main street?
Two Hundred Fourteenth, yeah, it crosses, it's going to cross Belshire, cross Norwalk. And then it's going to terminate on Clarita.
What is, what you mentioned is going to be from seven thirty to eleven PM or eight to eleven PM?
Yeah, that's in regards to the CIPP lining. So if I go back to the, there you go. So if you see here, and I, you know, I'm a very hands-on kind of guy, so I'm sorry. Because of the fact that, like you said in the video, has to cure because it is a resin. It's an epoxy resin and it's cured through hot water.
Okay, so they won't be able to park there at all?
No, no, no. Well, so yes, during the bypass, yeah, it's twenty-four, seven, no parking. It's the duration of the project and only in the places where it was marked red.
Okay, the reason why I'm asking is because parking is a big struggle in our city, but mainly Belshire is very impacted because there's a lot of apartments. So I was wondering, maybe if we can reach out, I know there's a Food for Less, maybe they can let us borrow their parking for that period of time because there's going to be no parking. And I know that residents struggle to park there as it is and now with this construction, it's going to be harder for them to find parking. So I don't know if maybe we can consider asking our local business to see if we can park there while construction is going on for that short period of time. Thank you and thank you again for this information.
No, I thank you for giving me the opportunity. So I'm very honored to be here. Thank you for this time.
I think for like a visual representation, I think there's a project going on right now in Lakewood from
It's on Pioneer.
Pioneer, Pioneer to Soritos or Torres Artesia?
It's between Del Amo and Two Hundred Seventh. So if you guys want to go out there, if you're more, welcome to go drive out there, go check out the the bypass being placed in place. I know it hurts in regards to traffic and parking, but like I said, I can assure you, this is a, it's a fifty-year life cycle. So we, once it's rehabilitated, the manholes are rehabilitated, the sewer lines rehabilitated. It's like I tell the residents, when I talk to them personally, I knock on their door, I talk to them, explain to them the impacts and I just, I apologize for the convenience, but like, please bear, please, please bear with us while we improve, you know, because I want to serve you. You know, I'm here to serve your residents. So if you could please allow us to move forward, we'd be very, very grateful.
Well, thank you so much for that very interesting presentation. We could sense your dedication and we appreciate that and human connection, especially with the residents, you know, you're providing your number so they could call you. And also, it's very fascinating just to see the science of it. You're talking about bypass. It's, I feel like, you know, it's like a cardiac surgery, you know? So you're doing that in a community. So I know parking will be impacted, but I think a proper communication and education would really help our community. So thank you again for that presentation, Mrs. Merritt. Next item, consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second. Councilmember Farfan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rua? Councilmember Vargas? Mayor Pro Tem Del Rio?
Yes.
Mayor DePaulo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item, new business. Is there any new business? Oral staff report?
It's mayor and members of the city council. The public safety department would like to remind our residents as well as our business community Mayor and members of the city council, the Public Safety Department would like to remind our residents, as well as our business community, that the city does have a security camera rebate program available to them. There's information on the city website, or they can visit the Safety Center. But once again, there are rebate programs available for security cameras, not only for our residents, but also our business community.
In regards to Public Works Department, I have a couple of updates regarding the Public Works Department activities. In Maintenance Division, we are, our department is moving forward with routine activities and emphasizing in beautification of the city. We are maintaining various city facilities, including sports complex, bus shelters and city buildings, and also landscaping in front of the City Hall building, and continuing with removing graffiti and bulky items from the city. In regards to the utility box wrapping project, we wrapped in the past two weeks most of the utility boxes on Norwalk Boulevard, north of Carson Street, and also Norwalk Boulevard, south of Carson Street, also on Pioneer Boulevard. Next week, we're continuing with wrapping the utility boxes on Carson Street between Norwalk Boulevard and Pioneer Boulevard. With this achievement, we'll be wrapping all the utility boxes in our arterial streets by the end of this month. City Hall Roof Replacement Project is getting close to the last phase of it. We're focusing on detailing and also installing the coping caps and flushings in the next two weeks. We're hoping by the end of this month, the City Hall Roof Replacement Project will be finalized. We're going to have fifteen-year manufacturer warranty and five-year contractor warranty, and hopefully no leaks in the next twenty years. C. Robert Lee Activity Center Re-roofing Project also started on Monday. We started the east wing, which was not previously re-roofed, and this project started the demolition phase on Monday. So far, we have a great progress. We were demoed, we demoed the racquetball courts and boxing gym and the C. Robert Lee east side, and also we're continuing with the offices and hallway in the next two weeks. And last, I wanted to share the great news that we received the supplemental agreement from Caltrans this week, and it was signed by both city manager and Caltrans, that we're going to receive one point five million for improving Norwalk Boulevard and Pioneer Boulevard. This is a great progress for our city, because in case of using general funds, now we're getting Caltrans funds to build this project. This was a last-minute, basically grant opportunity, and we were basically rushing staff to provide all the paperwork, and finally, we got it before the end of the fiscal year. So I just wanted to share this great news with you. Thank you all.
Good evening, city council. I wanted to update you on a couple of items in community development. We're continuing with our efforts to improve efficiency with the implementation of open gov software. In the Building Division, we have an eighteen-unit project in plan check. The eighteen units are proposed on Hawaiian Avenue. We've provided conceptual plan comments for ten units on Hawaiian Avenue. We have eight active ADU planning applications, and we're assisting finance with the user fee study. Thank you.
Good evening. Couple of things. One, I wanted to let you know that Alex Tyers on the corner of Civic Center Drive and Norwalk has joined the YEP program as a worksite. So they'll be starting to, as soon as we have a youth to put there, we'll be able to place someone. As she said, we're working on the fee study, and they're at the point now where they're going to be going back to the different groups and showing them what the fees look like based on the work that they've done, so that we're starting that next phase of the fee study. Also, this morning, we had a kickoff meeting for our new ERP implementation project. I put a copy of the presentation on your desk, so you can see what the company and what their project plan is. We also had meetings with users and with some subject matter experts to start the discussion. We'll be having more meetings tomorrow, and again, next Tuesday. That'll get us started, and then we'll start working through the process of determining what is that we need. And then they'll put together the RFP for the software, and we'll do that review and then go on to the next step. Right now, they're estimating April to bring it back to council to purchase the software. If we can speed that up, we would like to, but right now, April is what they're looking at. And at that point, then, we begin the implementation. See, do I have anything else? I think that's it.
Mayor, council, Joe wasn't able to make it to tonight's meeting, so there is a couple of announcements on his end that he wanted me to mention. The first being Friday, September twelfth, is the last concert in the park. It's going to be held here at C. Robert Lee in the patio area from six thirty to nine. Our Ballet Fortlorico program will be performing, and it will be an opportunity for those who were able to register to come pick up their banners, graduation banners, to come pick them up on site. The other thing, our youth light football program commences next week on the seventeenth and eighteenth, with the hopes of the game starting the week of September twenty-six. And as Nima mentioned, the re-roof project at C. Robert Lee is taking place. There is some disruptions to the facility itself, the front reception area is closed, the hallway is closed, but we, we are open for business. The gymnasium is open, the boxing room is open. Our after-school program has been temporarily relocated to the senior conference room. So, yeah, programming continues, and hopefully we'll be done with those projects.
Thank you. Next item, city attorney report.
Nothing from me, mayor, thank you.
Oral staff, oral council report?
Yeah, just on the public comments, do we, are we addressing the fireworks citation and the gate property issue? We have somebody? Is it, can I ask that?
So on the first speaker, there was a meeting held, and I'll have to follow up with staff to see how it went. But whoever was issued a citation, were provided, I believe it was two to three weeks in full time, to respond to the first citation that was mailed. If they didn't respond, then the second, second citation was mailed again to the property owners, at which point, an additional thousand dollars were assessed, because they did not respond. What we, what we've seen is, unfortunately, some folks have not received, or don't live in the locations where the citations were issued, so we have worked with a couple of folks in assisting with waiving that additional thousand dollars. But every case is different, and we're addressing them accordingly.
Yeah, that was something that we had talked about, you know, the problem with fireworks. So what was mentioned is that the lady mentioned, if she wasn't there, and it was addressed to the, how did that work out where she gets citation when it wasn't really her?
So the citations are issued to the property owner?
It's the property?
Yes.
So I think when we were discussing this, the issue was that in order for like law enforcement to actually give someone a citation, is that they would actually have to catch them in the act. But because this was going on so much during the time, that we were using other methods to be able to identify what was, what was happening, and
So just for the future, so like in this situation, which is kind of unfortunate, can the property owners address some sort of letter or documentation to the resident, the people that are in their apartments, that they're not allowed to have fireworks on her property or location?
Absolutely, I mean, yeah, that's their prerogative.
That becomes a private, a private civil matter, between the landlord and their tenant.
Yeah, because, I mean, it's coming to us, and they're addressing us as, as council members to see what we can do, and it's, it's an issue. So that's a concern I see. He wouldn't want everybody, you know, they were popping fireworks in my, my house, and they gave me a citation. I guess I'd have to come over and talk to you.
And the second, the second speaker, that's, that's also a private matter between the property owner and the HOA, and we have explained that to her multiple times.
Along the lines of citations, and I know this is more of like a code enforcement, but I've gotten phone calls about people that are getting cited, and their logic is that they're not parked in red, but I think it applies to like that twenty feet from the stop sign, or ten feet, I'm not sure what the actual distance is. But I'm not sure if that was something that we were doing before. I think we maybe need to inform the public that this is not, I mean, even though it's not red, you shouldn't be parked X amount of feet from a stop sign, because I got
There was, there was an effort made earlier this year to send out publications and social media posts about us starting to enforce, especially the parking around the corners. But we will continue to do so.
Is, would that be for the safety of the cars that are turning, because they're too close?
For pedestrians and, and vehicles.
Right.
Well, I don't have a council report, but I appreciate the initiative of the city reclaiming September as attendance awareness month. I know it's very significant in our community, especially as we partner with our schools in encouraging our students to really go to school. And I know there are other, you know, efforts that we could continue to do. I think attending or participating in our sports program is one way, because we are creating a commitment. You know, when a child commits on something, they carry that along as a life skill. And so I think we could continue also to encourage our staff in reminding them, you know, that aside from attending our programs, they should also go to school. And also, you know, we recognize that we have a lot of organizations, we have a few organizations in the city that do grassroots work in terms of delivering services and community services. And it came to my attention that in the past, Hawaiian Gardens has Hawaiian Gardens League or Civic League. So that program was designed to assist organizations in capacity building and enabling those organizations to, you know, to partner with the city as they do the work, instead of the city, you know, like directly providing the work. And so I wanted to ask the city manager to table, to table this discussion, to bring back Hawaiian Garden Civic League, and hopefully we could create some programs, so we could continue to create a more holistic approach in terms of servicing our community. Next item, closed session. Will the city attorney please read the closed session item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the council will convene in closed session to discuss item one, public employee performance evaluation for city manager pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five seven.
Thank you. City council will recess to closed session at seven oh two PM. City Council will recess to closed session at 7:02 PM. The City Council meeting has reconvened from closed session at 7:23 PM. Will the City Clerk please conduct our call?
Councilmember Farfan? Councilmember Roa?
Here.
Councilmember Vargas? Mayor Protem Del Rio?
Here.
Mayor DePaula?
Here.
We have a call.
Will the City Attorney please report out of closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The council met in closed session with all members being present. The council heard the item identified on the agenda and no reportable action was taken. Thank you, Mayor. That concludes my report.
There being no further business, I hereby join this meeting in memory of Mr. George Gonzalez, owner of Phoenix Patrol, who passed earlier today. We're adjourned at 7:24 PM to the next council meeting to be held on Wednesday, September 24, 2025, at 6 PM. Have a good night.